Do they, if they don't amend the salary ordinance to create this new position that's necessary, right?
No Supervisor Ellsberg, it does not.
And to the Mayor's Budget Office, is this going to be something we're going to talk about during the budget season?
We certainly can make a point of discussing it Supervisor. At the moment, I don't know that this position has actually been requested in the department's budget for fiscal year 0607.
Okay, thank you.
Just to Ms. Simmons, I understand through a discussion with Mr. Blout that this would be something that would be of, I think, critical discussion for the upcoming June ballot deliberations, June budget deliberations.
Supervisor Ellsberg, do you want a little call on this? All right, then we'll move this to committee with recommendation, without objection, if Supervisor Pesca doesn't stand up or, without objection.
I just want to clarify that this is combined as amended.
Yes.
Also wanted to state that the vote taken reflects only the voting members of the Budget and Finance Committee.
Okay. Can you read the next item, please? Do we have to do that on every vote we take, Ms. Adams, if we have another member here? Because we had Supervisor Ma here and made some votes, I think.
Mr. Chair, I think it's just so that it's clear to members of the public that the vote is for the five members. It's not really a legal issue, it's just so things aren't confusing.
Technically, we don't have a full board agenda and items on it to vote on. Yeah, all right. Can you read the next item, please, Mr. Young?
Mr. Chairman, if we could just rescind the vote on item number two. Can I, I'd like to make a mo, I'll, I'll explain it. Supervisor Amiano would like to hold a hearing on the Arts Task Force, not on the revenue proposal, and this would be in a vehicle that he could do so with on Monday. So what I was going to say is, if we could take this off the table, amend it down to $1, I would then transfer the item to GAO, and that will be a vehicle that will allow Supervisor Amiano to have the Arts Task Force hearing on Monday.
Because it's after 12 noon on Wednesday, he doesn't have the opportunity to introduce something and correct. Got it. Colleagues, any objection to rescinding our vote on item number two? Mr. President, can we just rescind our vote on the part that we, the part that we tabled? Because we, we had a multiple vote, right, Mr. Young?
Right.
We, we did something and we, we did $250,000, then we- Then we moved that out, and then we did, then we did, we did a tabling as well. So this will just rescind the vote at the table, without objection.
And then, on the item that's on the table, I'd make a motion to amend it to $1 and continue it to the call of the Chair.
So moved.
So we have motions and a second. Colleagues, Ms. Samuta, do you understand what we're doing? You understand the intent?
Don't worry, after we hold the hearing, we'll file the item and there won't be a supplemental sitting on your list for a dollar.
So, so then we'll do this without objection, colleagues? And the President will do whatever needs procedurally to get that over to GAO, or did we already do that?
I assume that Ms. Calvio will bring me the item to transfer it.
Very good. Mr. Young, can you read item number seven?
Item number seven, ordinance amending the San Francisco Administrative Code and amending the minimum compensation ordinance by making both substantive and clarifying changes.
Supervisor Amiano?
Thank you Chair Daley, and thank you, members of the committee. I know it's been a long afternoon, and I understand, Chair Daley, you want to be a co-sponsor of this in addition to Supervisor Mercurimi and McGoldrick, so I thank you for that. And the minimum compensation ordinance sets a living wage standard at 10.77 an hour with employer benefits and paid vacation for worker, workers at for non, for-profit city contractors. I'd like to ask the city attorney if you could just give us some quick highlights of the ordinance.
Through the, through the Chair Deputy City Attorney Cheryl Adams speaking, the new legislation is going to change the amount of the hourly wage. Currently, it's at $9 with the possibility of increasing up to $10.17. It will now start at $10.17 with a yearly increase based on the CPI. It also establishes the Office of Labor Standards Enforcement as the enforcing agency. Currently, it is the Department of Administrative Services that enforces the ordinance. Also, it will, the new legislation will provide the OLSC with enhanced powers to investigate and enforce the ordinance. Additionally, there's an administrative hearing process for employers to appeal determinations of the OLSC's enforcement determinations. And then as well, the new ordinance will authorize the city to collect liquidated damages from contractors who breach contracts. Also, there are provisions for collecting attorney's fees and other penalties.
Okay, thank you, City Attorney. And Ms. Simmons, I'm trying to figure out exactly how big a pool would be needed, that will be covered by the MCO. Could you just reiterate what would the outcome of the March 8th Budget and Finance Committee was in regard to the IHSS workers?
Noel Simmons, Mayor's Budget Office, at that committee meeting, funding was approved in order to raise the wage rate for IHSS workers to 10.65 an hour.
Okay. And do we have an idea then, a ballpark about how many people might be covered by this?
There are approximately 13,000 IHSS workers.
13,000, okay. And then, either Ms. Simmons or Ms. Samuta, what is the CPI index number you're using? And in terms of cost, how much then would be needed to fully fund this ordinance to meet the obligation of the CPI and the 12 days of pay lead-
which is the CPI for all urban consumers in the Bay Area, and the fully annualized cost of implementing the ordinance as written would be approximately $22.9 million in fiscal year 0607.
All right, are there any other CPIs out there that are less, or is this pretty much the standard practice this way?
There is also the CPI for urban wage earners, which would be about 2.5 as opposed to the 2.8, but the change in the cost is relatively modest for that .3% difference.
Okay. Then, or Ms. Simmons or Ms. Samuta, correct me if I'm wrong, but is the city not planning to give nonprofits a COLA increase, hypothetically speaking, as an alternative for the MCO? What would something like that cost?
Supervisor, the Mayor's Budget instructions directed individual city departments to assess the cost pressures on their nonprofit contractors and determine whether or not they needed a COLA. However, departments were not given additional money to fund a COLA, so if they were to do that, they would have had to make offsetting reductions elsewhere in their budget. When we did fund a 2% COLA on all general fund-supported contracts in the current fiscal year, the cost of doing so, my recollection, was approximately $6.5 million.
All right. I mean, the context for me is, obviously, the Human Services Network has a lot of issues, but I, their preference would be a COLA because that way everybody gets a raise, not just those working for contracts, and I just, I don't know if that'll fly, but it just puts the MCO in a proper financial context. And then back to the issue of the funding for the MCO, has the Mayor's Budget Office considered any alternatives to the full funding? Perhaps a scheduled phase in in order to partially fund or phase in the funds?
Supervisor, we did ask departments in their budget submissions this year to estimate the cost of providing an MCO increase, and we will be contemplating that cost as we develop the Mayor's proposed budget for June 1st.
All right, because, you know, obviously, those of us who are interested in this and the advocates would, you know, if any of those recommendations before the committee makes a decision, we'd like to be consulted or know about it. Okay, members of the committee, I was hoping that we could get some of this out of committee, because there is a desire to have this annualized. In other words, you know, we could fund the MCO in its entirely, entirety, or conclude a best way to phase it in. We could send it to the full board now with annualized funding, or the other alternative would be to continue this item to be part of the budget discussion. But I just want to make sure that it's not a one-time fix, because I think it's very important that this funding be annualized. So I don't know what your pleasure will be, and I think, Ms. Simmons, some of the information I gathered from the Mayor's Budget Office is that you feel this cannot today be moved forward, that it would have to go back, that would have to be part of the budget discussion. Is that correct?
Supervisor, what I suggested to you is that last week before the committee, there was a supplemental appropriation that would have funded this year's portion of an increase to the MCO. The committee tabled that item, and so yes, I believe it would be more appropriate today if you wish to fund an additional increase to continue that to the budget discussion. What you have before you today is legislation that simply amends the wage rate but doesn't provide the funding to pay for that increase.
Because-
Supervisor Amiano, if I could-
Sure.
The action of the committee last week does not necessarily impact the decision that the committee could make on this item. I think that, in all fairness, after the action the committee took last week for us to pass this item in its current form now would be a bit of an unfunded mandate, but there's no, no necessary provision, there's not necessarily provision against us doing that.
Okay, all right, but this is just weighing in on that. So Supervisor, I don't know what your pleasure is, would you want to have some public comment before?
Well, we have to have public comment before we do anything, and I know that Supervisor McGoldrick's name on the roster, so generally, we take any member who wishes to speak before public comment.
All right.
Supervisor McGoldrick.
Thank you very much, and I'm, again, always pleased at this juncture to repeat that I am a co-sponsor of this legislation, and thanks Supervisor Amiano and his staff and all concerned and the stakeholders here. Very important, very important stakeholders, I think that's the key thing. What we're trying to do here, obviously, without having to repeat it over and over again, is to help those who are in the lowest-paid positions around our community, and certainly giving people a chance of some level of survivability at this level. Is, always it still is, to increase it somewhat is just the proper thing to do. I would like to see this move out of committee. I think it's important to support this, to send it forward to the full board, and indeed, then, the full board, the Mayor, I believe, in his budget considerations, would then, hearing from this branch of the government, include the necessary funds in order to fund this in the upcoming budget. I think it's most important to pass it now, rather than have it go through the sausage machinery of the budget process, just as we pass ordinances day in and day out, week in and week out throughout the year, that then affect our budgetary considerations that we have to make as we go forward. So I think it's important, this is a piece of legislation, this is the ordinance, it doesn't have any money attached to it yet, but it says this is something we want to do, just as other things have come to us in different shapes and forms as ordinances, and then, once we pass the ordinance, then we do the appropriation work. I think that's the proper way to go here. I'd like to see it passed forward. I'd like to see the members of this, this committee send it forward, so the full board can deliberate this as soon as possible, and then you'd have this, and the Mayor would have this, to then start including it in his budget ASAP.
I would concur.
Sounds good to me, was outvoted last week. Any member of the public wish to comment on item number seven? I got a bunch of speaker, speakers cards, but I know a lot of folks had to go, so why don't you just come on up in no particular order? You have three minutes to comment, and welcome.
If I may, I have to leave, I have to be somewhere else. I appreciate, thank you, the opportunity to speak.
I understand that you're off to oppose some of my ballot measures at Labor. Have fun.
Right, and perhaps we'll see you there later, thanks.
Thank you Supervisor.
Welcome.
Let the debate continue.
Good evening Supervisors. I'd like to thank Supervisors Amiano, McGoldrick, and Mark Arami, Supervisor Daley, for supporting this particular amendment, this particular cause of ours. Also, I have several more signatures to add to the several hundred that we collected already. I am, thank you, Mr. Amiano. My name is Hugh Gregory, I represent the Living Wage Coalition. I work in MSC South, and I just want to say that, you know, we do a very, very hard job, and like Supervisor McGoldrick said, we deserve to be paid a fair wage. I've just put a pie chart onto the view screen here, and it kind of breaks up my expenses, what I make on a monthly income. My monthly take-home pay is $1,320. You see, the majority of my rent, the majority of my income goes to rent. Everything else is divvied up. I have $280 that goes towards food, $65 phone bill, $64 for school loans, for college loans that I'm paying off. I have $50 for Muni and Bart. Of course, I have, say about $150 a month for child support, taking care of my kids, my child, should I say. I'm lucky to be spending $20 a month on PG&E due to, due to the fact they have a plan for low-income citizens. But you, if you add all that up, my total expenses are $1,314 a month. And you might have seen the commercials out there for the checking the cash, the payday loan type of organizations. I find myself constantly in debt to these organizations to pay off my loans. Again, the chart speaks for itself, the work that we do, it's a, it's a very noble job. Also, with higher wages, you get better worker retention. We have a lot of good people that come into this field, that simply leave due to the stress and strain of the situation, and of course, the low pay doesn't help facilitate keeping good workers in a particular field that I work in. Working with the homeless, it could be strenuous, there's a lot of mental issues, there's a lot of handicap issues, and the type of work that we do, we're simply asked to be paid a fair wage. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good evening Supervisors. I'm urging you to support the living wage amendment, to raise the wages for lower workers. I am particularly concerned about nurses aides in private nursing homes, they haven't had a raise for years. And being a retired nurse, I know how hard they work, and how difficult it is, and how dirty a work it is. And they're just not paid enough to support their families, and they deserve the respect for the work that they do. These workers provide invaluable services to their community. We need to retain these workers to ensure quality service to the residents of the city. These low-wage workers are being driven out of the city because they cannot afford to live here any longer. Raising wages to a living wage law would, would provide services to the community so that they can, so they can raise the wages of the lowest-paid workers to about $11 an hour. It is a matter of political priority, and this is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
I'm Alice Lindstrom-Davis, and Will Manusom, the President of our organization Church Women United, asked me to speak for her today. She has been, is having surgery today. And people from Church Women United have been here every week while this has been under consideration, and we've spoke to you about it as a moral issue, as an issue of justice, as an issue that, that we, as members of the faith community who are women, who have, many of us worked in these lower-wage jobs and tried to be an example to children, and had a hard time convincing children as to the value of going into a nurturing, public-service job when the wages and the family was suffering from the, below the poverty line because of the parents taking a job which was a, a job of sacrifice, a financial sacrifice. And when you do these jobs that are caring and nurturing jobs, you like to do them as a volunteer basis and be able to support yourself, but somebody has to do it full-time too, because a lot of it cannot be done volunteer. What do people do in the shelters, what the, when caregiving gets to be, to be heavy, it has to be paid work. And people do this as paid work because they love it, because it's important to be done, or because that's what their talents are, or because they can't find anything else. And, or they can't, but when the, when the people suffer because, and they're not valued to be on the COLA pattern like the rest of the society is, in a society that's based, where the economics are based on inflation and things keep falling behind, it shows that these positions are not, are not valued, or at least the children of the families where these are, see that they're not valued and they don't want to go into them. And so, we urge you to pass this legislation with or without current funding. The important thing is that it get moved forward, that it is an important thing.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
My name is Robert Bustamante. I work at the shelter at Fifth and Bryant, the city-funded shelter, and I'm here to ask you to support the amendments and for you to pass them on to the full board today. We've been in committee now for quite some time, and, you know, would like to see this move forward. I think that these amendments are really necessary in order to protect the social infrastructure of this city. We're talking about people who work in numerous, community-based nonprofits across this city, providing a range of services mostly that this board and different city departments or agencies have mandated that be provided to San Franciscans, and we're the ones providing those services to tens of thousands of people, probably every single day. And what's happening is that we cannot afford to live on the current minimum wage that we have. There's people moving out of town. I've been working three years at MSC South, and in that time, I've seen six coworkers have to move out of town. I've seen coworkers have to take in roommates. Some of my coworkers qualify for public assistance. Here we are, providing services to the communities, and we ourselves have to go and ask for food stamps or various other services, and actually qualify for them. I hope that you move on this today, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mark. Next speaker, please.
Good evening Supervisors, Mark Gruber, Living Wage Coalition and United Taxi Cab Workers, and just as the city has a responsibility to workers in the taxi industry by virtue of the fact that the city regulates the industry, there's a responsibility to people who are doing the work of the city through city contracts or on city property. The living wage law is a good law, strong law, an imperfect law. It needs to be fixed. It was passed five and a half years ago now. The cost of living adjustments that were contained in the law have expired, so this is a law without a cost of living adjustment. I don't think the city of San Francisco wants to have that. There's a lack of parity between workers for profit and nonprofit companies. I think that's an incoherence that needs to be fixed. And I believe that Cow Works workers need to be brought into this. It's a question of dignity, it's a question of the value of labor. So, these are things that need to be done. I think they should be done now. I don't think this should go into the mix of funding for the next budget year, because this is essentially a remedial measure. It's high time that this be done. It's five and a half years down the road since this was passed. You'd be fixing an existing imperfect law, and I think you should go ahead right now and do that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gruber. Next speaker, please.
Carl Kramer, San Francisco Living Wage Coalition, and I, in our view of things, that the law should be passed first, and then, the Mayor's Office should be looking at where the cost for the law would be paid for, and then presenting that to the Board of Supervisors when it presents the budget on June 1st. So we're urging the Budget Finance Committee to send this to the board, to have it passed by the board, and send it to the Mayor, so he can incorporate it into his deliberations on next year's budget. As far as what it would cost in the fiscal year, the next fiscal year, and we believe the costs for this fiscal year are covered, this board has already budgeted money for these wage increases that would cover the final month of this fiscal year, June, which would be the earliest that this amendment could take effect. The, the lion's share is on, for home care workers. Now, if the state minimum wage goes up a dollar, then the federal and state government are going to be paying about half of that increase. Also, Noel Simmons, she made a mistake in saying that the language was for Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers. The language on page two is Consumer Price Index for Urban Wage Earners and Clerical Workers for the San Francisco-Oakland-San Jose Metropolitan Area. The City Controller's Office has already set that for fiscal 0607 for the minimum wage ordinance, and this is basically the same language as the minimum wage ordinance, and that's what's set at 2.31%. So the overall, you know, the overall cost for the year is substantially less. The, the other thing is that it's a shame that on the minutes of the meetings, the, that the list of speakers and previous hearings aren't matched to what's turned in on the cards, as far as the names and the organizations. Often, it's just, this is a male speaker, a female speaker, male speaker, names are misspelt, no identification, and it's a shame, because these were workers' faces that you saw at these previous meetings, who sat through these marathon sessions, waiting four or five hours to speak, as people did today. And you'll see from the speaker cards that were submitted today, that there were people that waited hours and just had to leave for work. But you, you saw before you, workers from the homeless shelters, work-
Thank you very much.
Home, health, home care workers.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer.
And, so, thank you Supervisor.
And let me just defend some of our workers, you know, our clerks are also workers who do the best job they can, and sometimes, I'm hard on clerks because I host meetings that go to all kinds of hours in the evening, and they hang in to a couple of our last meetings to nine, past nine o'clock at night, so also hard workers in our clerk's office, want to acknowledge them. Any more members of the public wish to comment on item number seven? Seeing none, we'll close. Public comments, Supervisor Amiano?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry we don't have a full complement here, but committee members, I would ask you to cut the workers some slack here. They, we, I apologize, because I had to delay the meeting because I had to be out. It is certainly a gesture of good faith to say that we would like this to happen and get the imprimatur of this committee. I understand what the resistance would be, but I really think it does more good for the common good than harm, and I would ask you to pass this out of committee today, rather than wait on, on it. People have, have been waiting a long time, and I always listen to public comment, even when it looks like I'm not, and today particularly- Today particularly, I thought we heard a lot of eloquence about dignity and the respect for workers, and it wasn't just empty rhetoric. And it is a cold, cruel world out there. And I know we're often asked to do miracles, but I don't think that this is a miracle. I think that we're asking for, I think it's reasonable. And it does, it does add the needed gravitas if it does have the committee's support first, as opposed to waiting for the June 1st date. So, again, I hope you see it my way, and we could get this out of committee today.
Thank you, Supervisor Amiano. Colleagues, the item is in the hands of the committee.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Peskin.
As with all things, it is a trade-off. And so, when the June budget comes, we will know, you know, if we do this 23 million, what won't we do? And so, I mean, doing this today, you know, arguably either means we're doing an unfunded mandate or we have to find supplemental funding for a month. I certainly understand what this ordinance has done over time and salute Supervisor Amiano for first putting it on the books. And it's clearly done a lot of good, and it's obviously topped out at, you know, 1077 and 1051 for folks with contracts. But I would be more comfortable in at least understanding where this is in the scheme of all the trade-offs that we collectively are going to have to make in seven weeks. And I'd prefer to do it as part of that discussion.
Supervisor Amiano, unless Supervisor Ellsburn feels differently from Supervisor Peskin, the reality is there's not political will in the committee to move this forward today. With that said, Mr. Clerk, if you can add my name as a co-sponsor of the item. Supervisor Mercurimi is already a co-sponsor of the item. And with, and with that said, shall we just call this, continue this to the call of the Chair without objection? And it'll be back. Mr. Clerk, can you read the next two items, please?
Item number nine, resolution requesting the Budget and Finance Committee of the Board of Supervisors consider selected revenue increases and expenditures reductions in order to fund the city's obligation of Proposition H funding to the Public Education Enrichment Fund for fiscal year 2006-'07. Item number 10, hearing to consider budget plans for the First Five Commission and the San Francisco Unified School District for Public Education Enrichment Fund for fiscal year 2006-'07.
Is there, you want to call the last item too, Ms. Samuta? Is that what you're saying? Can you read the last item too?
Item number 11, hearing to consider the overview-
No? All right, yeah, it doesn't matter. Go ahead and read it.
Item 11, hearing to consider the overview of the General Services Agency, Human Services Agency, and Department of Public Health Policy objectives for fiscal year 2006-2007.
If it's okay, colleagues, I'd like to start with the First Five Commission. Is there a representative from the First Five Commission with us?
The commission that I used to serve on, Supervisor Mercurimi currently serves on.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Gloria Corral. I'm the Deputy Director at First Five, San Francisco. I'm here to answer questions and talk with you if you have questions about the portion of the Preschool, of the Prop H funds that fund Preschool for All. We have launched Preschool for All this year in '05-'06. We are, have 27 participating preschool sites. We are serving 550 children in four zip codes. The budget that you have before you, the proposed budget, is to extend and add 10 additional zip codes to bring it up to 14. Prop H calls for universality within five years, and we are moving forward with a plan to provide high-quality access to preschool for all four-year-olds within five years as requested by the, by the proposition.
What's, what's the, may I ask what the dollar amount?
Excuse me?
The dollar amount?
6.6 million for this year.
And how much proposed for '06-'07?
What was the question?
That's, that's proposed for '06-'07, or that's current year?
That's correct. Proposed for '06-'07.
And do you know what the current year is?
3.3 million.
So it's a doubling. Does that, does that mean there'd be over 1,000 children served, or?
That is, that is our goal, yes.
Supervisor Mercurimi, do you have a?
Well, I certainly support this. As you prefaced, I replace you Supervisor Daley on the First Five Commission, and I think the First Five Commission does good work. The only question I would have for staff of First Five is, do we, in my role as a commissioner, all the funds are not distributed at the same time to the same intended neighborhoods. We discovered that not every neighborhood is in receipt of the funds because CBOs that are on the ground may have not been enabled to carry out the tasks assigned. So it concerns me that not all the funds that have been allocated in the past are going to be allocated in the future to the intended communities that are supposed to, you know, implement the programs. So how would we make sure that that happens differently this time?
We've actually, as you might recall, are doing a couple of things differently this time. Given the fact that it was our first year, there were, timing-wise, there were issues around making sure that we had sufficient time to plan and reach out to communities in the first year. We actually, this year, have started outreach much sooner. We actually have, as of Friday, received our next round of applicants. So we feel very strongly that we will be able to work with those providers that are already ready to receive the funds and then work. We have, you know, six months between now, more or less six months between now and the start of the program year to work with providers who might need additional supports to meet our basic criteria. And so this year, for '06-'07, we actually have more lead time to work with those providers.
And what if the funds just sit there for whatever reasons and they're not being allocated to those providers? What is the recourse to make sure that, you know, some revenue strategy is enacted? Because I've seen this with two neighborhoods. Based on the information we received at the commission, money just did not get to the intended source. So there were a number of services that just didn't happen.
Let me see if I understand, if I understand the question. If the question is what happens with the revenues that are set aside for this purpose?
Yes.
My understanding is that they are, they stay within the fund, and then we will use those resources to provide, for instance, additional technical assistance or additional professional development for those sites that need, for instance, a coach to really get them to meet our quality guidelines and our quality threshold. So that, if that's the question, that's, that's-
It's unspent funds, is what I'm concerned about.
Right.
Yeah.
Colleagues, any other questions for the First Five Commission? Thank you so much for coming and spending your entire afternoon with us.
Yes, it was a pleasure. Thank you.
I make a motion to move this forward with recommendation, after public comment.
There's not necessarily an item in front of us, I don't believe. There is an item, item number nine is in front of us, which is a resolution aimed at Prop H, more generally speaking, in terms of city services in lieu of cash payments. With that said, why don't we move over to the school district? And some of this discussion did happen last week. Maybe we should begin this conversation by asking district staff if there's any new information for you to present this evening.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Nancy Waymac for the Unified School District. You have before you the spending plan for the 2006-2000 funds for the proposition, I'm sorry, the Public Education Enrichment Fund. The spending plan was created after receiving significant public input at five community meetings, several outreach events, including the District School Enrollment Fair and DCYF's Family Day. After receiving the public input, the District's Community Advisory Committee on Prop H made recommendations to the Board of Education. All recommendations were accepted, however, the recommendations for the new spending and the other general uses category, which is the category that could be in-kind, were accepted tentatively based on the outcome of the governor's budget and contract negotiations with UESF, the United Educators of San Francisco. Recommendations are in four major categories: the sports, libraries, arts, and music, and other general uses of funds. In January of this year, we've hired, we hired our PE content specialist. She has delivered professional development for one of our professional development days for this year and is in the midst of working on our PE master plan for SFUSD. And she'll be having community meetings in the next few weeks and months to receive feedback on the draft of this plan. And the recommendations for next year, there are funds to begin implementing the PE master plan on the elementary school level and hiring a PE teacher for county community programs. This school year, all middle and high schools receive funding for intramurals and athletics on a per pupil basis. School site councils have elected to spend those funds on things such as additional hours of personnel to supervise intramurals, new uniforms and new equipment. And a similar recommendation is in place for next year. However, instead of funding sites strictly on a per pupil basis, as was the case this year, the number of athletic teams at each site has been taken into consideration. The Athletics Office has also received funding this year to support transportation to and from games and other high priority items. The recommended funding for the Athletics Office has increased to 1 million for next year. These funds will be used to create a safer environment for sports, including maintaining and repairing fields and tracks, repairing and resurfacing tennis courts, expanding medical trainers and use of officials, providing additional training for coaches, and once again, providing additional transportation to and from games. We're excited to report that we've been able to provide one day of service from a librarian for 35 of our elementary schools through the Public Education Enrichment Fund this year. Ann Dalton in the Office of Textbooks and Libraries is working hard to fill the remaining positions for librarians. We're optimistic that with earlier recruiting this year, we'll be able to expand our pool of elementary librarians to serve all elementary and K-8 schools two to three days a week. Funding for one central librarian to support all district librarians is also included in the recommendations. Funds for recruiting and supplies for the librarians are recommended, and the library office has recommended that any carryover funds be used to purchase district-wide library materials, such as licenses for online reference sites. In the last year, the district has engaged in a collaborative process with the San Francisco Arts Commission and several community stakeholders to develop an arts education master plan. Recommendations for the uses of Public Education Enrichment Fund dollars for arts and music are all associated with recommendations for year one of the Arts Education Master Plan. Those recommended expenditures include the middle school arts teachers that are in place this year, as well as establishing arts coordinators for each elementary school. All schools would continue to receive per pupil funding for arts supplies and activities. For elementary and middle schools, the amount would be increased from $5 a student to $10 a student. And high schools would receive $20 for students for arts. The proposed spending plan also includes a position to coordinate the rollout of the Arts Education Master Plan and professional development for secondary principals and elementary arts coordinators. In the other general uses category, we've funded a continuation of peer resources that serves a number of our middle and high schools, as well as a halftime nurse, social worker, learning support consultant, or counselor in each elementary school.
Excuse me, Ms. Waymac, do we have copies of what you're reading?
Oh, you don't? I can certainly give it to you, but it's in the, it's in the submission that we gave you. I'm basically just going over part of what we've done this year, as well as what we've recommended for next year.
Ms. Samuta, this is in our packet?
My comments are not in your packet, but the spending plan is in your packet, I would assume.
That hasn't changed, the spending plan?
That has not changed, no. Just to give you an update on where we are for the other general uses category, approximately half of our elementary schools have received these positions to date. We're continuing to recruit and hire these positions and feel confident we can achieve full staffing for next year. There's not a proposed increase in staffing for this item, so it again would be a .5 position for each, for each site. There are two additional recommendations for the other general uses category, similar to many of the things you've heard testimony on today. However, it's important to note that these recommendations are tentative based on the outcomes of the governor's budget and the negotiation with the teachers' union. The first of these recommendations is to add counselors, one for every 500 students for all middle and high schools. And the second recommendation is to provide flexible per pupil funding for high schools to use for violence and truancy prevention, additional custodians, nurses, counselors, librarians, arts teachers, or AP test fees. All recommendations for this coming year's spending plan in the other educational uses category are based on receipt of cash as a part of the 12.2 million in forward appropriated funds presented to the district in July of 2005. We'd like to begin structured work soon to identify potential in-kind services we can receive from the city as part of the 2007-2008 spending plan. Once again, we're very thankful and excited by the opportunities presented by these, by the Public Education Enrichment Fund, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Colleagues, any further questions for Ms. Waymac? Supervisor Mercurimi?
Just one, I just want to make sure I understood correctly. So have you formed up plans for the other general uses category of the allegation from '05-'06 of the 5.6, 6 million dollars?
We have had a plan in place for the 3.3 million that was originally appropriated. The additional 2.2 million that came as a part of the forward appropriated funds are a part of this spending plan. However, those 2.2 million dollars have recommendations tentatively associated with them, pending outcome of the governor's budget decisions and the collective bargaining negotiations with United Educators of San Francisco.
So predicated on the governor and, and what happens with the teachers?
Right.
The 2.2 million carry, carryover has not been budgeted per se?
It has. There are two recommendations for those funds that would total the amount that are there. Those two recommendations are the additional counselors for middle and high schools, and then, and then flexible per pupil funding that would go to high schools specifically. And they could choose from a menu of things. Those would include the violence and truancy prevention programs, and I can tell you the specific things. Violence, truancy prevention, custodians, nurses, counselors, librarian, arts teachers, or providing funds for AP test fees.
How those funds will be spent?
Well, they would, we haven't allocated those funds to sites based on the tentative nature of the recommendation. The sites would determine that on a school-by-school basis with their school site councils. They haven't made those determinations at this point.
Okay.
When they do their revised budgets in the fall, they would have those allocations if they did make it through to that point in the process, and they would make those determinations at that point.
And did you satisfy with the controller the question of the performance measures? Did that get-
I did give her additional data today. I don't believe she's actually had time to look at it.
Ms. Samuta, did you receive the request, I think that a few of us have made, certainly the controller, with regard to performance measures?
Through the Chair, Supervisor Mercurimi. Yes, this afternoon I did receive from the school district information on the performance measures that contains baseline information as well as target for each of the measures that is included in the report. So I do have it. We have not had an opportunity to review it or analyze it, but we do have it at this point.
Thank you.
No more questions? Thank you, Ms. Waymac. Supervisor Mercurimi, let's go ahead and take public comment on items number nine and 10. Does any member of the public wish to comment on item nine or 10 on today's calendar? Seeing none, we'll close. Public comment have been counseled by Ms. Adams that we are in fact able to basically report resolutions from the hearing on item number nine, and also seems as if we may want to act favorably on item, I mean, item number 10, and also seems as if we may want to act on item number nine as well. That's in front of us. On item nine?
On item nine, you tell me the resolution that we had put forward.
Item nine is a resolution from Supervisor Amiano that basically asks us to look at in lieu services. Read the exact language. Resolution requesting that we, the Budget and Finance Committee of the Board of Supervisors, consider selected revenue increases and expenditure reductions in order to fund the city's obligation of Prop H funding to the Public Education Enrichment Fund for next fiscal year. Seems like that's what we're looking to do anyway, so I'm not sure we-
Well, I could just point out that the first resolve clause there is something that's still, I'm still a little troubled with, and I don't feel we've gotten enough information- I'm still a little troubled with, and I don't feel we've gotten enough information. And that's that the Unified School District develops specific in-kind proposals for this fiscal year by March 1st. We're already past April 1st.
I would agree.
And that's still where I, you know, I, last week, when I continued, when I asked to continue this item, that's where I was hoping to see today, if there was some more, if we could get some more discussion about what's in-kind.
Supervisor, I would actually, for item number nine, just some other concerns that I have about absent or insufficient data, ask that we actually continue this item.
I think that's fine. It seems to me that the intent of the maker of the item who's left us is to ask us to do what we're doing.
Right.
So I think whatever we do with it, it doesn't matter. We're doing what the maker of the resolution is asking us to do, so.
Well, there's just, there's larger questions about Prop H funds, too, but in this case...
So then, so then, if you want to make a motion to continue item nine, I'm fine with that.
Motion to continue.
To the call of the chair.
Call of the chair, without objection.
Call of the chair.
And then on item 10, Supervisor Mercuriemi, you have a motion?
I made, I had provided you a resolution in support of passing item number 10 for the first five commission.
I've got it. Mr. Young, do you have this?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So we'll take this as a motion from Supervisor Mercuriemi. Supervisor Ellsberg, you may read it.
Item or line 14?
Seems like the devil is in the details.
That's scary.
Probably should be 6,666,666 dollars. Also a scary number, but much lower.
This has biblical proportions.
And just so I understand it to the controller, this resolution with this change is just the first five commission spending plan? This is not the Unified School District spending plan?
It's the one-third of the Prop H funds that were allocated to first five. Supervisor Ellsberg?
That's fine with me.
So then, on this resolution, we will forward it to the full board without objection?
Thank you.
And then on the remainder of the hearing itself with the school district, Ms. Samuta, what do you think is reasonable in terms of you revealing what's been submitted earlier today from the, or yesterday from the school district?
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, Monique Samuta from the Controller's Office. As we reported out last week, there were a number of recommended steps regarding the San Francisco school district's plan. Number one, we did note that there is a significant amount of unspent money in the current year, and this committee has not been informed on how the school district will be spending that carry forward from prior year. Secondly, there was the issue of the performance measures and the data that was not available last week. It would appear that now this data has been received. And finally, we had recommended that this Board of Supervisors get together with the school board to hold a hearing on the impact of the plan, the performance of, of the school district, and future programs that would be funded. And then finally, there is the question of in-kind services and whether or not the city should provide in-kind services in lieu of cash for that final one-third allocation. So all those four issues continue to be up for your consideration.
We got it. Thank you, Ms. Samuta. Supervisor Mercuriemi?
I would make a motion that we continue this item for one month.
This is the hearing request. Can we make a friendly amendment to the motion to have out the first five commission item of it, since we've dealt with that already? So we're just, we'll continue?
I'm sorry, Supervisor, but just on the Unified School District portion?
Yeah. So then without objection. Mr. Lee, your item's already been read.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to confirm the action on the last item.
Yes, sir.
We are dividing the item with the San Francisco Unified School District section being continued for one month, and the remainder of the item, which is the first five commission, we have prepared that in committee as a resolution and are recommending that forward.
Well, the hearing kind of goes away, and then the resolution goes to the full board.
Okay.
And Mr. Lee, Supervisor Ellsberg just whispered in my ear, I assume that all the staff that are with you, none of them are paid by the hour or overtime rates? Anyone who qualifies?
Ananously, no, sir.
Anyone who qualifies would be excused by the committee.
I believe they consider themselves to be clerks.
Good evening, Supervisors. Ed Lee, City Administrator. A while back, this committee asked that our offices, the General Services Agency, bring back to you a more fuller presentation of where we're going, what we're doing, and the challenges that are before us. So we do have a short presentation that we'd like to have presented to you, and then we...
Since we're stuck at Quorum, short is good. Let's get it going.
Absolutely, and we could be able to answer any questions that you wish. I do have extra copies for people here. Supervisors, we have been working very hard to form the new GSA and have identified seven areas we wanted at least go over with you tonight, mention to you what we're doing in that area, and take that opportunity to present to you some of our new staff that we've invited to work with us in the city.
Let's do it, honestly. Go ahead.
Okay. The challenge number one, protecting the core services of all the departments. In this year's budget, Supervisors, we have identified 1.3 million dollars in cuts that are an aggregate of about 3% of our reduction goal, which is consistent with many years in the past, where we've had a lot of cuts in the departments. We've been able to do that in three major areas without affecting direct services. And those three areas are...
Administrative position reductions, overhead restructuring across departments, a reduction in operating with your Moscone contracts.
Absolutely.
That's good.
Okay. Second, we've created a new organization, General Services Agency, and one of, we're looking at all the areas we can function better. The first area that we targeted on for admin services, DTIS, and for DPW is to consolidate our human resources into one area and make it more efficient. And I want to just take this opportunity tonight to introduce to you our new Human Resources Director, Mr. Steve Nakajima, who's one week old, and already into...
You look older than one week, but welcome, Steve.
And a very, very good resource to us to add. I'm assuming more direct management of the day-to-day affairs through my office, having all the departments report directly to me, so that that be more efficient. And then finally, Supervisors, we are taking our role as assigned by the Office of Emergency Services to be the logistics chief for the city, and making sure every one of our departments, aside from DPW, which has operations primary responsibility, all the other departments under me will have a logistics responsibility, and that will be, I think, rolling out in the next few months as we give primary leadership logistics. As you can recall, at every report, particularly in Katrina, the logistics was the big failure of those, of those events by government, and we want to make sure that that never happens in the city.
And Ed, are you on the disaster council?
Yes.
You are.
Yes.
Can we just back up for a second to your expanding IT support? Can you talk to me about how that fits in with DEDIS and the possible reorganization of IT functions that we started to discuss at the COIT meeting last week?
I do have that as part of our challenge number five.
All right, we'll keep going.
And we'll be running right down to it. Okay. The next item is the improve, improvement of our city infrastructure maintenance. I want to introduce to you tonight our new appointment, Fred Abadi, the Director of Public Works, and Fred will be presenting that to you.
If you're going to speak, you might want to come on up into the front row if you're speaking tonight. And I don't know if Ed has told you whether you're speaking tonight or not, but if he hasn't, maybe he should. Welcome, Fred.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Since I'm very new here, I would like to take just a couple of minutes to introduce myself to you, and I know I have met one or two of you, and I haven't had the opportunity to meet with you. I come from Minneapolis, where I was Deputy Director of Public Works, and prior to that, 10/11 in Milwaukee County and State of Wisconsin, primarily working on engineering, construction management, operation maintenance, and public works administration. And before that, I was in the Bay Area, working Bay Area Rapid Transit District, so I'm not totally new to the Bay Area. So with that, I have three slides that I want to go through, and with me I have a public works team that hopefully if I wasn't able to answer your questions, they would jump in and help me out. So with that, I would like to go over public works mandates, and I'm sure that you are very much...
I hate to do this to you, but if you can skip the three slides, I would appreciate it because Supervisor Mercuriemi and Ellsberg maybe haven't been here as long as me, but I think that we all understand the work scope and mandate and mission of DPW. I think what I'm interested in getting at in this hearing is specifically what your budget, what your budget guidelines going into next year looks like, specifically what you've submitted to the mayor's office, what your contingency cuts look like, how is that going to impact the delivery of services within your, in your mandates? And if you wanted to defer back to Mr. Lee, I would understand and wouldn't expect you to be fully on top of your budget in that level of detail until maybe June, when you're back here, defending your budget against our budget analyst. That's when the real fun, the fun, the real fun happens. Don't know if they do that in Milwaukee, but here it's, here it's great fun.
I believe that the '06-'07 budget, the impact on us is roughly about $375,000 cuts to the department.
So what are we talking about? Where is that cut taken, and what is that going to mean in terms of either, either quality or scope of service? That's what this hearing is, I mean, this hearing is not necessarily about what departments' missions are. This hearing is specifically about how your budget submissions, we're really trying to get into the budget discussion here, you know, maybe on the earlier side, to try and figure out how your budget submissions to the mayor's office and their ask for contingencies may impact your mission, I think is kind of where I'm heading.
To summarize at a very high level, Supervisor, per the first challenge for the coming year, we combined the reduction targets across all of the departments, the reports to the City Administrator, Public Works, DTIS, and Administrative Services. The combined reductions came to 1.3 million dollars for the 3% budget cuts, and I think the shortest answer is that there's not a service reduction resulting from the reductions we put together. We've reduced a handful of administrative positions across the department, but without layoffs. We've restructured how our overhead funds are structured to work in such a way that we have a general fund benefit. And then lastly, we've dug into the operating budget contract for the Moscone Centers to generate about $700,000 in savings, again, without, without a service pack. So the shortest answer, I think, for Public Works, for Administrative Services, and for DEDIS is that there's not a service impact from those budget cuts.
And that may be good enough, and if you were able to give me that same answer for the 311 call center, we pretty much all could go home happy this evening. Now, I skipped three slides. Mr. Lee can come back and, or whoever's, I definitely want to talk about the technology and perhaps even the capital need.
I'm sorry, Ed.
Supervisor Ellsberg, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Chair Daly, but those three slides that I think he skipped, I think are my three favorite slides, talking about city infrastructure. If you could just give it, you know, one of the problems with our city infrastructure is we do just give it lip service most of the time, but if you could give it a little, Ed, would be great.
And just so you know, Supervisor Ellsberg, my point wasn't to say that certain missions of DPW, I don't, you know, I care about certain things the Health Department does too, but I certainly do not want, and if you're listening out there, I don't want Dr. Katz or Mr. SASS, whoever's going to come up, come up and talk about all of the missions and core components of the Health Department, what I want to hear about is their budget.
I understand.
All right. But, but go ahead and please, please answer Supervisor Ellsberg's question.
Supervisors, on, with respect to the infrastructure, did you have a specific question you wanted the presentation on?
Not the full presentation, how about just the part about the 10-year capital plan and where that's at and how that fits in with your department?
Supervisor Ellsberg, Ben Rosenfield, City Administrator's Office. You've got actually a number of major pieces of infrastructure planning legislation coming through this body in the coming three months. First, per legislation approved by the board and the mayor last year, the City Administrator's Office has been working with the Department of Public Works and the Office of Public Finance to complete a 10-year capital plan that's due to this body on May 1, and I believe it's scheduled for hearing in May. So that, that's coming ahead on schedule and before this body. Secondly, I should mention that the ADA Transition Plan, which the city's been, has been underway for a number of years, is a second piece of legislation that's going to be coming before this body shortly that addresses physical needs in our facilities for individuals with disability. And then lastly, the Hall of Justice and SFGH replacement projects both move forward, both have capital allocations that have been requested for next year, and both are going to be in the budget that's before this body.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair Daly.
At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Chris Vian, our Acting Director of DTIS, to talk about the strengthening of city's technology and governance and delivery process.
Supervisors, Chris Vian, Chair Daly. I gave a rather lengthy presentation at the Committee on Information Technology about a week ago. In that presentation, I talked about the need to revisit the 1996 IT plan and specifically strengthen both governance and the operation of the one-stop-shop DTIS.
Mr. Vian, I, you know, I was in the committee and I got the report, and it's very interesting. Are there any budget implications for the next fiscal year?
So the budget implications at this point are that we would move the positions from the, for the governance structure into DTIS, and that's all I'm prepared to present to the committee.
So no cost and no savings?
I'm sorry?
No cost and no savings?
Of that, no. That's it. As far as IT proj, as far as IT project, projects go, there are various layers of technology that we will be making presentations for, strengthening our network, our telephone network, doing those kinds of things, infrastructure improvement types of projects.
And then in terms of, I'm looking at the controller, the, or perhaps the budget director, the PeopleSoft or the DHR software, that's going to come in the DHR budget? Or is that going to come in a special project budget, or is that going to come in the DEDIS budget?
The current, you're funding for that project sits with the Department of Human Resources, and so...
It's going to stay there?
It will remain there.
Okay.
Anything else?
Supervisor Ellsberg?
Since I've got you here, a few weeks ago, we had the first hearing on the violence supplemental, and a couple of the items in that supplemental raised a point that I'd like to talk to you about.
Okay.
And I think there was a couple hundred thousand dollars to the Police Department and a couple hundred thousand dollars to the District Attorney to do some IT work within their department, and specifically with the Police Department, it was to hire a consultant to help them figure out how best to utilize technology. And the point I raised with them was, what's the point of DTIS if they have to hire a consultant? You weren't here to defend your department. Could you maybe respond to that point? You know, and they're not the only department, Board of Supervisors, we have our own tech people. Talk about the mission of DTIS and what the purpose is when other departments are doing their own thing.
Okay. Back to that 1996 IT plan, as I understand it, the vision for the city was to create a one-stop-shop for technology. As I understand it, the vision for the city was to create a one-stop shop for technology, which became DTIS. Over the years, that concept has remained, but the ability of DTIS to meet that vision has not necessarily been there. So as a result, when you have a police department that is looking for specialized services, especially how systems can support police officers in the field, my department doesn't necessarily have the expertise or the skill set or even the people because we are a consulting company, if you will, we are a professional services department. So we can only staff up and deliver the services that are requested of us. So when there is that kind of specialized need, unfortunately, oftentimes, we have to go outside to bring that need in, and that's my understanding of what the Policeman Department was requesting.
Just added to that question, don't you think DTIS should have the capability of performing a service for a attendant agency of the city government?
I think we should. The difficulty that we have is that there are six, we have 60 different client departments to understand their business and to be able to support their unique needs as they support their mission. And we, for various reasons, haven't been able to build that expertise in all 60 cases. We certainly do it for many departments, the Controller's Office, the DPH, a number of. We do help them as best we can, but we do not have the skill set or the people to cover all departments and all special needs.
Well, even before the skill sets in assisting those other 60 departments, what about just the standardization of data management? The Police Department themselves are struggling to recover and synthesize basic data that even a normal sunshine request wouldn't typically be granted for those who would gain access to that kind of open information.
Correct. We do have skill sets in some pieces of this. But again, as I understand it, what the Police Department was looking for was a top-to-bottom analysis of all of their system, all of their needs, all of their people, the skill sets, and to make a recommendation based on best practices in other public safety jurisdictions. We didn't have that best practice information from those other jurisdictions.
It would be nice if DTIS had some protocols for the other agencies so that there's greater continuity or consistency, at least in terms of being able to provide the kind of data that anybody should be able to really request, instead of there being this tapestry of who has a better data management system than somebody else.
I totally agree with you, and I think I would more than willing to work with the committee to try to make those changes across the city. It's just not set up that way right now.
Before, I don't know if it's you or Mr. Rosenfield or who, but do we know what's going to be included in the submission on the 3-1-1 center? Is the fee package coming? Is...
Supervisor, we're very consistent with the presentations. Just a couple of weeks ago, the costs are coming in as we refine them with what we presented at that point. We're working on position transfers that seem to be lining up with what we talked about a couple of weeks ago. And we'll have legislation to establish a fee ready as a policy option for the mayor and the board. So I...
I assume if it gets introduced by the department, then it has the mayor's support.
We've, we assumed in the presentation we made to you that should the fee be accepted by the mayor and the board, that it would be effective on November 1. And that was with the intent that the board would have that option before them with the budget.
Not going to calendar a fee that comes from a department in my committee if you keep using language like if the board and the mayor support it. If the thing's coming from the mayor's office or the department, I want to hear that the mayor supports it first and before I calendar it.
Supervisor Noel Simmons, Mayor's Office. If there is a policy decision by the mayor that he would like to move forward with a 3-1-1 fee, that legislation would come forward with the mayor's budget in June. And it would then be to the board to decide whether or not they want to include it in their final approved budget.
And it will be duly calendared and discussed in this committee. Go ahead, Mr. Lee.
Supervisors, at the end of this, we had some key real estate decisions that I think are going to be pretty straightforward, and that's pretty much our presentation. We, in the future, would want to report back to you on the purchase of One South Van Ness that will be coming down the road, how we would do that. It also would be connected to our exit strategy from other rented spaces, including the big one, 875 Stevenson, and how we can save on that. I am increasing our focus on property management. As we gain more of these buildings that we own, we have to manage those buildings better. We have not done that in the past. And our first challenge has been the Hall of Justice and being able to report back to Supervisor Ma and this committee on how we're managing that building better than we had in the last few years. And we've got a lot of good things that are happening there for life safety issues and for protection of our city workers and the people who use that building.
When you say real estate transactions potentially, do you mean also the sale of surplus property?
Sale of surplus property, absolutely, as well as just the property that we have on hand and how we make sure we're maintaining them, the ones that we have, that we own with the city workers in them. And finally, we've authored, and it's on the street already, a RFP for new management of the Bill Graham Auditorium. We expect, given the RFI that we put out some months ago last year, that we should have a better income stream from that building so that the revenues there can support other ideas for the whole Civic Center area. That would be the key real estate decisions we would be making.
And, Mr. Lee, when I said that I wanted to skip over three slides, we actually skipped over four slides, and I actually only wanted to skip over three slides, the fourth slide being the major capital needs and planning for them. Supervisor Elsberg asked about it, but I mean, just specifically... I'm, I am interested in this area and especially the interplay with the crazy process that this committee just went through in terms of appropriating a little bit over $50 million and better-than-anticipated revenue into the general fund. Some of it headed your way. And what you're doing also in terms of your, you know, year-to-year budget process. And I think that, you know, the road resurfacing issue is an important issue, and I appreciate Supervisor Elsberg's focus on it. I actually voted against the item. But even though I voted against the item, it doesn't mean that I'm not interested in what you're doing and what your plan is in order to catch up with the need that's out there.
And on that, on that particular topic, Supervisor, we had had presented as part of that supplemental appropriations, the actual identification of all the streets that we've been doing and the timeliness of them. So we are very confident that we are going to be completing $30 million worth of street repaving for the city in the next fiscal year.
Supervisor Elsberg?
That assumes, and it's an assumption I agree with, but that the Transportation Authority allocates the 12.8 that we did not put in our general fund supplement.
Absolutely, and we will definitely need your help to make sure that they do that.
But I think meanwhile, even though there was political will this year to move the 15 that may not be and was not intended by Supervisor Elsberg, I believe, is an ongoing expenditure from the general fund. So I mean, I think that when we get into the nitty-gritty and the details of your budget submission on that issue, I'm specifically interested in what's going with the gas tax and, you know, what's being programmed where with, you know... I keep wanting to call them Prop K, but they're not Prop K dollars anymore there. Are they Prop K? Yeah, Prop K dollars.
Prop K and Prop 42 funds.
Yeah. So, I mean, we can get into that in detail. And then Hall of Justice is a building in my district that I know has been in critical need of, you know, replacement or some sort of planning or vision. And I noticed that it's on in the spreadsheet, and I appreciate that. I just, politically and financially and feasibility with the other major capital needs that are out there, specifically General Hospital. I'm at a loss politically for the way to proceed. You know, there's also a sentiment out there against building new jails. And, you know, I know that we've faced that with the, the sheriff has faced that with the San Bruno project, and we did certificates of participation. But I mean, I think that some planning around that makes sense to me.
Supervisor, we've had, we're beginning to have those conversations. And when we are, when we do submit the 10-year capital plan to you, we will be able to help analyze that and to suggest priorities to be considered by the board on all of these capital structures.
Good. Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Thank you.
Mr. Rohr, welcome back.
Good evening, Supervisors. Trent Rohr, Director, Human Services. I'm prepared to discuss the four questions that you laid out specifically around policy issues in our budget and programmatic decisions based on the policy directions of the department. First, just a real quick overview. So you have our budget, the whole agency budget in the context of the general fund discussions. The whole agency, which is, as you know, Human Services as well as the Department of Aging and Adult Services. And Ann Hinton, as the Director of DOS, will be presenting on the DOS pieces. I think it's important that you, that you hear from. The DOS Department has as well as the priorities of Aging and Adult Services are co-mingled, but also distinct of Human Services. Just briefly, of the total agency, $600 million budget or proposed budget of $599.5 million, as approved by our commission earlier this year. Thirty-eight percent of that is federal revenue. Thirty-one percent is state funds and realignment dollars that we received from the state. And then about 25% is county general fund with another 6% grant funds and other sources. And I point that out really just to demonstrate sort of the flexibility or sort of lack thereof in terms of what discretion we have over our general fund. Of our general fund, portion of our budget, which is about $150 million, it's about, as I said, 25%, only about $50 million, 5-0 million, would be considered pure discretionary. That is, it does not match or leverage other federal or state dollars, is not a requirement, a maintenance of effort in order to draw it on other funds, and is predominantly spent in the areas of homeless and housing services, child welfare, childcare, and some workforce development. In terms of meeting our baseline target as set by the Mayor's Budget Office for this upcoming fiscal year, we prioritize the following. One is maintaining agency staffing levels. The second is maintaining the agency's presence in the communities we serve or the partnerships and contracts with community-based organizations, maintaining or expanding housing and homeless services, and then maintaining services to children, including childcare and child welfare. Supervisor Daly, your office asked that I discuss briefly the, how we got to our general fund target in terms of general fund reduction. The general fund target caused or required us to cut about $705,000 in general fund. Given those priorities as I listed above, we really met this target by raising non-general fund revenues, shifting expenditures to other funding sources, and also reducing budgeted amounts more in line with expenditures that were projected in the current year. So the reductions to get to the $705,000 are really ancillary services in our cap-and-pays programs such as transportation, funding to assist individuals move from welfare to work. That's a reduction of about $100,000. Reducing our CalWorks Housing Subsidy Program by $61,000. And eliminating the changes...
I mean, are those being picked up by non-general fund?
That is a program that really we have phased out because it wasn't as effective as we would have hoped. So the $61,000 just represents no new enrollments into the program. So we'll continue the subsidies for the families that are currently receiving them. I'll talk a little bit about our strategies around homeless families, which certainly has a big emphasis on subsidies, but probably a different design than we piloted a number of years ago under the CalWorks program. The biggest reduction is to our work order with Department with DTIS, Department of Telecommunications and Information Systems, mostly because of work that we can absorb in-house as well as less of a need from DTIS to support our systems. Our contingency reduction of about $933,000, which is, has not been included in our base as approved by our commission, but is what we have proposed. Really two big areas. The first big area is $472,000 related to foster care, therapy, case management, and foster care aid, largely due to a wraparound program that we recently got approval from the state to implement. We think these general funds won't be necessary, given the wraparound approach. And the second is, Supervisor...
Can we talk about that?
Sure.
So basically, you think you can discontinue specific programs for specific services in terms of the foster care system? And that basically, we're not going to see significant reduction in service because there's a new state program?
That's what we believe. Let me just talk a little bit more detail about that.
When we get these state grants, they don't have displacement clauses?
It's actually, this effort is not a state grant. This is a waiver that we received through Senate Bill 163 that allows us to use foster care placement dollars in a preventative manner. So rather than spending state funds to support someone in a foster care placement, you can use that same amount of money for therapy, for other wraparound whole-family services to either keep the child out of care or to put the child in a lower level of care, which is, and the lower level of care is a lower cost. The other foster care...
And sort of proof is in the pudding. You make these proposals, and the foster care community shows up in the board chambers in June. It's different than if you make these proposals and, you know, the folks who care about that issue are sort of like, oh, okay, that'll probably work.
Supervisor, point well taken. That is one of the reasons it's on a contingency list and not in our base. The foster care community was one of the stakeholders involved in the development of our SP 163 program, and so they are bought into this idea. The reason it's a contingency reduction is that it is a new program, and ramp-up would be slow. And so if this were adopted as a contingency, it would put us a little more under the gun as a department to make sure this was effective.
Okay. Then that's a contingency. All right.
All right. And then the other contingency item is really tied to a one-time investment into a call-in system for foster care aid. And that is, when there are placement changes, a child either leaves a placement or is moved to a different placement, rather than an onerous paper system that is now, it would be a call-in system to immediately terminate the foster care payment to that provider. And so it would, it would result in a savings because payments wouldn't be going out that shouldn't be going out. And again, it's tied, it's a contingency reduction as it's tied to a one-time investment that we need to make. Some of the challenges under Human Services Agency or Department of Human Services more specifically are not surprising to you all. The largest is probably just the general challenges among the low-income and at-risk populations we serve, particularly Housing and Homeless Division, homeless families and families at risk of homelessness, and also Child Welfare Services in terms of the high number of kids relative to the children population who are in foster care. Also, we really have seen increased caseloads in most of our aid programs over the last five, six years. And co-existent with that is pretty much flat state funding and as well as a general fund, you know, a lack of general fund flexibility due to local budget constraints over the last number of years. And then the third big challenge are changes in state and federal legislation that we are working to implement and struggling with. I don't have a presentation, but I do want to highlight a couple of the caseload growth charts just so you can see the magnitude of them. On the overhead is our non-assistance food stamps program. And you can see the increase there from September of 2000 to the present. There's about a 75% increase in caseload. What you see on the next slide is the byproduct of having flat funding for caseworkers. So we have actually budgeted fewer FTE in food stamps than we did in 2000, yet the caseload has increased significantly. I could do that for various programs, and certainly we'll get in... I could do that for various programs and certainly will get into more, more detail on Medi-Cal and home supportive services and others, but it's really a byproduct of a couple things. One is certainly the economy over the last few years, but secondly is the department's effort to ensure that individuals who are eligible for these entitlement programs receive the entitlements, the entitlements to which they're eligible, particularly immigrant populations as well as working poor families and individuals who may not be aware that they are eligible for some work supports even though they are employed. Just for a way of percentages, I won't show the graphs, our in-home supportive services caseload is up about 58% since 2000. Our adult protective services caseload is up by almost 50%. Food stamps I noted, and then Medi-Cal is up at about, up about 35% as well. I'll talk a bit about how we attempt to address these challenges a little bit in a couple minutes. In terms of changes in federal and state legislation, the biggest one being the reauthorization of the federal TANF program. This is the federal program that authorizes the state CalWorks program, CalWorks locally as well. The concern we have over reauthorization is the significant increase in work participation requirements among our low-income families who are receiving public assistance, and it remains to be seen how the state of California in its authorizing legislation is going to respond, but our concern would be the state forces us into a program that is, is more of a make-work program than a self-sufficiency program, and that's something that we in our county plan have, have expressly wanted to avoid in implementation of welfare to work, yet when California is facing federal sanctions of $100 to $200 million, they're under pressure to force counties to increase our work participation rate and without adequate state funding to, to operationalize or implement programs that are more robust in terms of services and real employment opportunities, we may be stuck between a rock and a hard place. The implementing legislation most likely won't be until late 2006 or even early 2007, but it is something we're keeping an eye on. I should say, we are, we do have a work participation work group that's both internal and external, looking at ways to increase work participation while not adversely affecting clients. I noted challenges given the population we're serving, and I specifically want to speak to child welfare in a couple of areas. One is the disproportionate number or disproportionate percentage of kids who are in our child welfare system who are either African-American or Latino. In our child welfare system, about 70% of our 2,300 kids are African-American compared to about 9% citywide. We had established a task force a year and a half ago, two years ago, to address this and have begun to implement a number of initiatives, which I'll speak to, to address this. Second large area around child welfare is the high number of emancipating foster youth. We have about, as I said, 2,200, 2,300 kids in care, fluctuates a bit. About 45% of those kids in care are teenagers. Half of those 45% are 16 years of age or older. So this means, not to get lost in the data to break it down, this means that about 900 youth are going to be emancipating the foster care system for the next five to six years, which is by far the largest cohort that we've ever emancipated.
But is the impact of this just unmet need in terms of, in terms of budget needs you have, or is it that there are entitlement programs and so we're going to see some things happen in terms of program costs?
Specifically with emancipating youth or covering all the caseloads, Supervisor?
On any of the things that you're talking about? Just trying to figure out why you're talking about the things you're talking about.
Sure. On, on the caseload pressures, what I'm trying to point out is that sometimes it gets lost that the impact of clients sometimes gets lost in a discussion of caseloads. These are entitlement programs, they get the benefits to, you know, which they're entitled, but what happens when a caseworker has a caseload that's twice what it was is you can't give the attention to the client that's necessary, sometimes the benefits don't get, clients don't get benefits in a timely manner, we have to triage clients. The caseload pressures get so big that clients get adversely impacted, and yes, it is-
No, I hear you, so, so you budget in order to have resources to meet those, those caseload needs, right?
We budget on the benefit side, absolutely. Budget on the caseload on the worker side, at this point, we don't have, other than in-home supportive services-
I mean, I think where I'm trying to get at in this conversation, leading into our June discussion, is if you're looking at potentially some greater caseloads in the next fiscal year, then you either budget to meet that or, I mean, if it's entitlement, you're going to have to do that, and if it's not entitlement program and the budget is not there, then it's unmet need because of increased caseload.
That's right.
And then, I mean, and that's, I mean, and that's sort of where I'm trying to focus the policy discussion in terms of budgeting to reflect, you know, what the realities are in the department and what the need is, and, and then, and then us here, we, you know, attempt to balance priorities against other priorities, you know, that are competing for, for limited, limited bodies.
Which is why I'm bringing it to your attention now in April, is that this is a discussion that we're currently having with the Mayor's Budget Office and exploring a number of strategies to mitigate the effect on individual caseworkers of these high caseloads. And these include both looking at creative ways to spend general funds in order to draw down more state and federal dollars, but also different business processes, business practices in order to reduce workload.
I mean, and so some of this is reflected in an ASO, I mean, so did you, are there more positions in your budget submission to the Mayor's Office than in the current fiscal year, and are you debating that? I mean, is that what, is that what you're saying?
It's currently, it's currently a discussion with the Mayor's Budget Office.
But you submitted more positions or you, you didn't and now you're asking them for?
We did not. In the, in the budget that our commission passed, we did not include a significant number, new positions to address what I'm talking about now. Again, because of the competing pressures and priorities within the department and the general fund reduction target, there was simply no room to do that with, with new general fund. However, we are looking at strategies, potentially one-time general fund strategies.
I get it.
Okay. We're in discussion, Supervisor. But to address your questions of challenges of the agency, it wouldn't be, it would be disingenuous for me to be up here and present challenges and not mention the caseload increases, even though it's not, even though it's not reflected in our current budget.
And you started your comments off basically by saying that there weren't significant service reductions because you're able to do creative things with, with state or federal money or grant money, and that sounded really good, but now you're talking about something different which indicates that, in effect, there would be service reductions.
Uh, in effect-
Because of increasing caseloads in certain, in certain areas.
There are as-yet undetermined or undefined potential impacts on services, Supervisor. Because they're, again, because they are entitlement programs, someone is eligible for food stamps, they're going to get the food stamps, but when you're looking at caseworkers who have 250 clients instead of 125, they are, there are ultimately going to be downstream impacts, and that's what we're beginning to try to grapple with.
I get it. And, and let me just say that I appreciate your bringing it to our attention, but you should probably keep your discussions going along with-
As we are.
With the Mayor's Budget Office, and if it so happens that it continues to be an issue in your budget, you can bring it back up in June and we may or may not be able to address it, just kind of like they, right now may or may not be able to address it.
Sure.
Much better to get them to address it, because if they address it and it comes June 1st in your budget, it's highly unlikely that we'll be looking to cut caseworker positions. Harvey Oros will probably want to cut three months of them, but Ms. Simmons probably already knows that.
Supervisor, one of the reasons I'm bringing it to your attention is every year in June we have the discussion with the Budget Analyst Office about vacant positions and the need in our department for positions, and I'm raising it with you now so we aren't surprised. And of course, I'm not new to the process, it definitely is a discussion with the Mayor's Budget Office, and if it, if it ultimately is one of the priorities in the Mayor's Budget in June, you won't then be surprised seeing new positions for our caseload support.
And it is highly unlikely that the committee would, would make those cuts beyond the, the cuts that Harvey always makes in terms of the time it takes to hire up, et cetera, et cetera.
Correct. On emancipating youth, because it's different than caseload pressures, it's really about what are we going to provide for our youth when they emancipate, and we're working both with the state and also our local providers on our, expanding our transitional housing placement program. We currently have 31 units in a partnership with Larkin Street Youth, and we're expanding by at least 20. And we also hope to secure state legislation to change the sharing ratios to allow us to draw down additional state dollars to expand the number of units. Let's see. Briefly on some of the initiatives to address some of the issues I talked about, homeless family redesign is probably our, our largest. We are leading a task force of over about 120 stakeholders, talking about our homeless family system, looking to reorient it more towards permanent housing and services needed in permanent housing and less on emergency shelter. We certainly, the actions of this committee last week are certainly in line with some of the recommendations coming out of that task force, and we're currently in discussion with the Mayor's Budget Office regarding, once these recommendations come out, support for homeless families. I should also mention Assembly Bill 2961, which is a bill that would allow us to use CalWorks funds to provide, to provide both a rental subsidy and eviction prevention dollars. It's a bill that's sponsored by Speaker Nunez and it passed out of committee yesterday unanimously, so we're hoping to be able to leverage additional federal dollars through that bill to support rental subsidy efforts as well as eviction prevention efforts. It is late, I touched on a lot of our issues, some of our priorities, if you'd like, I could walk through some more around our child welfare efforts. They're more programmatic changes and improvements rather than budgetary augmentations, and I could talk a bit about resources if you'd like.
That's, that's kind of the level of detail that, we're not going to be able to help you on this side right now at that level of detail. She, she might be able to.
She's fully aware of, of the help that we need to-
But that, the kind of stuff you're talking about, you're going to have to come back in June, but let me reiterate, you come back with your issues addressed, you know, you're not competing against, you know, the things that Mr. SASS is going to get up here and talk about.
Correct.
Right. Should we go to aging?
You should. Thank you, Supervisor.
Good evening. As you probably saw from the reports that we submitted, our baseline cuts were in the little over $300,000 range, and we moved some revenue around, some of it was new revenue, and we were able to stave off any effect of those cuts on consumers. The next round, the contingency cuts, were around $750,000, and our commission asked that we prepare detailed information for them about any consumer impact at all. And so because, except for about $19,000 that we were able to come up with in those contingency cuts, all the rest of the cuts did have an effect on consumers, our commission made the decision to not forward recommendation to the Mayor's Office. A plan was put together-
Can we, can we hold on that? And then, how did the Mayor's Office respond to that?
Sorry, I was having trouble with the acoustics. I didn't quite catch the last part of what you said, Ann.
I said that the commission declined to forward those recommendations on to the Mayor's Office.
Yes, that's correct. And so Supervisors, every year, there are a number of commissions who do not vote to approve the department's budgets. A letter is generally sent to the Mayor's Office, we take it under advisement, and we continue to work with the department in terms of meeting the budget instructions.
And that's-
But the commission is the one, I mean, that's, that's the official action, right?
It is the official action of the commission, yes.
And I, I would think that any departmental representative would have trouble working with you, given that their policy body or their governing body basically said no? And so then would you just look to do it across the board cut, or how does that work?
No, most representatives of departments will submit to us the proposal that went to their commission with the notation that it was not approved by the commission, but they will generally forward that proposal to our office anyway.
Really?
Yes.
That seems wrong. I may have a weird sort of notion of right and wrong, usually not, not the same one that the Mayor's Office has, but, I mean, it would seem to me that if the governing body actually affirmatively voted to not submit, that there would not be a submission? I mean, I, am I missing something? I mean, is it just that they don't really have the say to do that and, and so staff can defy the actual vote of, of their, of their commission? Supervisor, Alston?
Just my thought, the, the governing body of the, the commission is responsible for its department, yet the executive and the legislative branch are responsible for all the city departments.
No, I'm not, I'm not, yeah, I'm not saying that, that Ms. Simmons couldn't decide to, or the mayor couldn't decide to submit a budget to us on, on June 1st that included cuts that, that a commission didn't agree to. I'm just somewhat surprised that staff for a department would submit a staff recommendation to the Mayor's Office that their commission had voted against in the affirmative. It's not that they didn't take a position, it's that they actually took a position against-
Supervisor, I think that what many department staff, as well as their commissioners, understand is that there is a reduction target that's been issued to departments, and the mayor does need to reduce citywide spending in order to balance the budget by June 1st, and so the department could have chosen not to submit a budget proposal to the Mayor's Office at all, and then in fact, you're quite correct, the Mayor's Office would have had to develop that cut plan on their own without department input. Most of the departments I've spoken to and their commissions choose not to approve a plan, prefer to simply convey that message to the Mayor's Office, but then actually prefer to have some say in the reductions that are going to be made before June 1st as opposed to having no input whatsoever.
And that's the action taken, I mean, I mean, if that's the case, then that's the action that I think the commission should take. And if commission's taking that action, then this seems fine, but if a commission is actually taking an action, then it's more resolute than that. I think that this kind of internal process is not okay.
Well, perhaps Ms. Hinton wants to speak more to the commission's discussion.
And not, and not to jack you up specifically, Ms. Hinton, you're just the first one here in this position this year. Ms. Hinton?
So I guess I would say, since I'm relatively new at this, but it has seemed to me to be important that we work with the budget staff, and as we have, one of the policy decisions that we made early on, or that I made early on, was that we would not do an across-the-board percentage cut on programs because since there has, have been those types of cuts in the last few years, it is starting to really take the meat away from, especially smaller programs. So we did decide this year, as we put our package forward, that it would, it would mean that we would close some programs, and that has certainly been an open discussion in our Finance Committee meeting, in our Commission meeting, and with the Budget Office.
Okay. I mean, if, I mean, if your commission is, I guess if your commission is aware of it and, and basically green-lighting it, you know, that makes it more okay to me. I mean, to me, I mean, I would trust you and I actually personally agree with what you just said in terms of not wanting to go the across-the-board cut route. With that said, I think there are governance issues which perhaps are at a higher level than that. But if you have, if you're clearing this with commissioners, I'd be more comfortable with official action saying, we don't, we don't submit anything and we're going to allow our staff to continue to work with the Mayor's Office, but, but the, I mean, if, if the discussion's happening, at least in the, the committee level or amongst commissioners and yourself, then, then I guess that's all right.
Would you like me to continue then?
Sure.
Okay. One of the other questions that you asked about were the challenges for the department in the foreseeable future, and it's like the foreseeable future is already here. You may know that last spring, when we had the APS case that hit the papers in May, our referrals for APS went up 20% at that point, and they've been staying at 20% and higher for the entire year, which has been hitting around about 305. for the entire year, which has been hitting around about 305 each month. But this month, we hit 369 referrals. It may not seem like a lot, but all of those have to be investigated, and when you have a staff that's already stretched thin, it means that people can't really be out on the pavement and working with people as fast as we need them to be. So what seemed like a challenge that we could be dealing with over a little longer period of time, we now obviously are watching very closely to see if this is a, becomes a trend, and if it matches the one we've had for the last 12 months. Some of the other, IHSS has mentioned a lot. A few years ago, the growth in that program was 12%. It's now running 7% a year, so there's almost 17,000 people being served by that program. So one of the things we are also looking at is that the workforce and how do we support that workforce through the two contracts that we have, the one through the public authority and then also with the IHSS consortium. Obviously, the Olmsted decision is on our minds, but even if it wasn't on our minds, we would be thinking about, how do we in fact create a long-term care network that is, works in this, the community that we live in, and works for the consumers that we have here? 25 years ago, California really did a major wave of change in terms of who was institutionalized.
Ms. Hinton, I think that all of us here are aware of the issue, and I think that, generally speaking, we all, notwithstanding a vote on a previous item...
That's fine.
Tonight, we all are supportive of, you know, alternatives to the institutional route, while also being supportive of our institutions at the same time. I'm wondering what the impacts in terms of your budget are. I mean, that's what this, I mean, this is more specifically about these policies vis-a-vis the next fiscal year. I mean, you know, what, I know that there have been a large number, we have had many people come and get public comment about a long-term care, some sort of trust fund. They've asked for $10 million. I assume that this has not been in your budget submission, and so I'm just trying to figure out, in terms of this dialogue or this communication, other than the fact that we know that there are advocates and some consumers who are advocating for this enhancement, well, what's the department's position? And then how does that compare to what you've submitted to the mayor's budget office? That's kind of where I'm getting at. This is sort of maybe new territory to be pushing these questions, but...
Are you asking specifically about the trust fund that has been mentioned in the community?
I mean, is the, does your department have any specific position on the trust fund yet? I mean, is there a...
Our commission took a position this morning and voted to support the concept of the trust.
And then is there an ask of the administration, or, I mean, for example, there's been much public comment about this item, I think it even said it in one of the hearings, no member of the Board of Supervisors, no department, not the mayor's office, has introduced a funding item. I've heard that there's a supervisor who perhaps has introduced a mechanical item that involves the controller setting up an account.
That's what I heard.
But, you know, that's short of, you know, a significant monetary ask.
The department itself has not asked the mayor for a specific amount of money for the fund.
Gotcha. And then you can always introduce a budget supplemental if you want.
There you go.
You have that power under the charter?
There you go.
Now, Noel's going to give me a dirty look, I bet. No, no, she's not. So that's, department heads have the ability to bring legislation in front of the board. So I think you would qualify.
Yep.
Colleagues, any questions for Ms. Hinton? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to the smallest and least consequential department in the city and county of San Francisco.
Good evening, supervisors. Greg SASS, I'm Chief Financial Officer for the Health Department. I have, I really only have one overhead that I would like to put up on the board to basically just show a summary of how we balanced our budget and talk through the various issues that are, you know, within those. I certainly answer any questions you have on those. Where we are at this stage is, we have met the base budget target to absorb $7.1 million of our, to reduce our general fund by $7.1 million and absorb 50% of the increases for the employee retiree add-back. As you can see on the schedule, we have actually exceeded the $7.1 million budget reduction by 200,000. We are, we have balanced our budget with a $7.3 million reduction in our general fund. We, our approach to this is, has been the same really over several years. What's different this year, and as you'll see as we walk through this, is we just had a very fortunate combination of revenue increases this year that has made it possible for us to literally meet almost all of our target with additional revenue at the end of the day.
I'm sorry, Mr. SASS, is this, is this what billion-dollar departments buy in terms of fancy presentations to the budget committee?
Well, I wanted to just kind of get to the point here.
I appreciate it. Let's put the overhead back up.
All right.
I'm a little offended it's not handwritten.
So you can see the whole thing there.
On a cock, kill napkin. Because that's how we word, that's how we just moved $54 million, by the way. That's neither here nor there. All right, go ahead. Please resume.
Well, essentially, the way we approach our budget is we begin by really figuring out what cost increases we are going to need to deal with as a result of changes in regulations, which were significantly affected by federal and state agencies that, and licensing agencies that really place additional requirements on us sort of year after year, and cause us to either increase staff or management oversight or reporting. And we identified $2.1 million of items in that category. I can go through those if you're interested, but for now, I'm just going to work with the summaries. Inflationary adjustments, it's pretty self-explanatory.
Is there a significant regulatory issue, or is that a bunch of regulatory issues? If it's a bunch, then skip over, but if it's like one or two, mention them.
Well, it's, well, actually, I think there's about, 1, 2, 3, 6 items. Primarily, probably the single largest item is the fact that there have been changes in the work rules for interns and residents. They can, they're not allowed to work as many hours as in the past.
Lower hours for interns and residents.
We've had to backfill their absence with nurse practitioners. It is a good thing.
Good, okay.
But it has a cost associated with it.
We got to pay for it. Got it. So go to the next one then.
Okay. Inflationary issues are, in a way, self-explanatory, but of this $9.1 million, the single largest item on the list is $4.8 million for a cost of living increase for our contractors. We rely on our contractors for a tremendous amount of our mental health and substance abuse services, as well as our PUC contract at San Francisco General.
What percent increase?
It's a 2% increase to the total contract expenses we're incurring, and we're working with all of our contractors around how we're going to best allocate those dollars to kind of meet their inflationary needs. It may not be enough, but it's what we were able to manage with an...
Some of them may be asking for more than that.
Yes.
But the good news is this year, there's at least some goal of budget aid.
Exactly. So we have something in our base, at least to begin with. There are a couple of other items there. We are seeing significant increases in the cost of natural gas and steam from, you know, through the work order with PUC. That's a 1.2 million. There are increased costs of pharmaceuticals, just inflationary. There's one area where inflation just really outstrips, you know, any kind of growth in you would normally see. We're seeing, looking at at least an 8% department-wide increase in the cost of pharmaceuticals. So that is built into our base. So these are just items that we feel like we need to take into account, just to be responsible with that. The third category, and this is a fairly large category, are really what we call structural issues, and this is where we're incurring expenses this year, or we anticipate we will be incurring expenses next year that are not in our base budget. And we, I think the two supplemental, revenue supplementals that were approved for San Francisco General Laguna Honda for excess personnel cost are two items. For example, $5 million that we felt we needed to build into next year's budget planning so that we wouldn't be coming back to you next year looking for that $5 million. So those are, that's five of the 13. We have a large item, $3 million item in here for what has turned out to be a continuing increased cost of placing many of our patients at San Francisco General, and particularly into alternatives, long-term care alternatives, whether it's, you know, residential housing or institutes for mental disease, out-of-county placements. And we are seeing that cost really as a result of the way that the mental health rehab facility was restructured a couple of years back. We find that we are needing to rely more and more on outside sources to house a number of these patients in long-term care. So really, there's three or four big items in here, and there's a number of smaller items. Once we sort of come up with that figure...
And then with what we did with the EIR, how's that, how's that going to be handled?
Well, the EIR is a project.
Are you...
That...
Are you dealing with that? Are you dealing with that? Are you talking about it? What's, our assumption here at the Budget Committee was that we were going to get a budget submission on June 1st that included 12?
An additional $12 million to total 13.1.
$12 million for sequel work?
Yes. That, obviously, it's not a part of our base budget, but as we develop our one-time list and as we work on capital project budgets, we would expect that that would be an item that would come through that mechanism. So...
Okay. I believe you.
The base budget was submitted really before that item was resolved. And these are all operating expense increases. Once we've identified these, we are, not really beforehand, but simultaneously, we're working on what kinds of revenues we think we will be able to generate, and this is really where we've had the best outcome this year, because we've seen a large increase in skilled nursing facility rates at Laguna Honda Hospital that is worth about $16 million a year, year over year, and we are looking at another $11 million at San Francisco General, most of which is coming from Medi-Cal reform and the way that this formula is going to work in the coming year.
That's continued good news, and the mayor's budget office is allowing you to basically use your better revenues to make up your general fund problem? Is that basically how this is working?
Well, these are revenues for next year, as well as, so they're not, we're not really carrying forward surpluses from this year in this balancing process. This is all revenue that will be realized next year through, you know, the, because although we received these rate increases this year, we get the full-year value of those in the next fiscal year.
You only got partial year value this year.
Excuse me?
You only got partial year value this year?
Well, probably pretty much full-year value this year, but to the extent that it's generating a surplus in this year, it's going into the citywide surplus, and that's being dealt with as a separate topic.
So this is just, you're contributing this year in terms of your revenues that are going to get absorbed and be part of the mayor's balancing package for the next fiscal year, and the next fiscal year, you're going to continue to get good revenues, and basically that's going to be, you're going to be able to score that against your increased costs that you just outlined, plus your seven, something like $1 million in terms of whatever the mayor's budget instructions were.
Yes.
Got it. So that's good news.
Exactly. So really, for us, our ability to do that has meant that we were able to pretty much cover all of our increased expenses, and we only needed one initiative in our budget that I wouldn't really call it a service cut, because it isn't. It's just a change in the way we're doing business, that to bring an additional 1.3 million in to bring us to the base budget target.
BOPays, that word scares me when I hear you all talk about it. What is it? What's the...
What is the item?
Yeah.
Well, the item essentially is, is we are currently charging a $5 and $10 copay for most of our clients, and we are proposing to extend that copay to all clients that use our outpatient pharmacy and our network pharmacies, except for people who are on public assistance who are homeless, who are homeless. It's a $5 or $10 copay.
So who does it impact?
And we're also going to exclude a range of drugs that are really kind of critical for, you know, from a health standpoint.
So who does that impact?
Antipsychotics, antibiotics.
Now, what patients does that impact?
Well, this would essentially affect everyone except people that are on general assistance or are homeless. So it would be at all levels of our sliding scale.
But you said most of your patients do pay the $5 to $10.
I believe it's above 100% of poverty we have the...
So we're talking about between really poor and on public assistance or homeless and 100% of poverty? Those are the folks that are going to pay this, going to bring in the 1.6 million?
It would be those who are on general assistance and are home, or are homeless. So there could be people that are below 100% of poverty if they're not on general assistance, and they would also be required to.
Currently, the co-pays apply only to people above the poverty level? Is that right?
I'm not certain I heard the question.
I'm trying to figure out, sorry, the acoustics are bad. I'm trying to figure out who is impacted by this policy change. Who's going to give you the 1.6 million dollars? Who are those people demographically?
Well, demographically, these would be individuals that are part of this, our sliding scale program, that are at all levels of our sliding scale program, all the way down to, you know, to poverty and above, who are not homeless or who are not on general assistance. So it basically applies to all clients who get pharmaceuticals from the public health department.
Except that some...
Except for, except if you, except for certain things such as...
There are people who already pay the copay.
...insulin, antipsychotics, and so on.
Who are the people who currently pay the $5 and $10 copays?
I believe it's everyone above 100% of poverty. So we're working with that range.
So there's one point...
Most of our sliding scale are really at that 100%.
So we're talking about poor, because they're below the federal poverty level, but not homeless or on public assistance? That's where this money comes from?
Unfortunately, yes.
I'm just trying to figure out, I'm not, I'm not trying to justify it, I'm just trying to get you to tell me what it is.
Well, again, yes.
That's a yes.
Yes, the answer is yes.
That's a good enough answer.
And all I can say is, of all of the reductions we were considering, this was the one that did not actually reduce service, that...
I get you.
So it is a change in a financial policy.
I'm not complaining about it yet.
Now, to, just to, also to be clear, we have not met our contingency target, and we have not submitted a contingency plan as yet, which is another $7.8 million. And to be honest, we are having a very difficult time identifying how we can, you know, bring another $7.8 million out of the health department's budget without really impacting service, and we just don't want to come back with proposals that...
I got you. But this is, this is a point I'm interested in. Ms. Simmons, can you comment about the health department and a pretty significant chunk of your contingency asks, seven, almost $8 million? What are you, what are you doing?
We have been having ongoing conversations with staff from the Department of Public Health, as well as with Dr. Katz...
And what has Dr. Katz told you?
...reviewing a number of different proposals, none of which, as Mr. SASS notes, have gone to the Health Commission as of yet, because we have not yet arrived at a very satisfactory package. Unfortunately, this is the same department providing the same array of services that they were last year, and so many of the reductions that we're looking at are items that we have seen in the past.
Yeah, Supervisor Ellsberg, and that's a good enough answer for me. I know what they are.
Question, I don't know if it's Noel or Monique. In the mayor's State of the City address, he talked about doing an audit of the Department of Public Health?
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, Monique Smuda from the Controller's Office. We have issued a request for proposal for a comprehensive audit of the Department of Public Health that would include benchmarking across the nation for other public health systems, to look at the types of services that are provided, cost per service, other kinds of comparisons, as well as looking at the continuum of care that is provided by the Health Department, and the amount of revenues generated, as well as county subsidy. And we will be choosing a contractor over the next two to four weeks with an expected delivery of late summer.
An entire audit of the department will be done by the end of the summer?
We're expecting about a three to four-month period for the work to be done.
And this is out of the city services auditor?
That's correct. It will be supervised by our staff, but performed by a consultant that specializes in public health delivery services.
Just, that seems so fast. How much is this going to cost?
We have not yet received the bids, Supervisor.
Well, good. I have no more questions for you, Mr. SASS. Do you have anything to add, or?
No.
You'll be back.
No, happy to come back. Thank you very much.
Any member of the public wish to comment on item number 11? Seeing none, closed public comment. Colleagues, all these departments will be back in two months. I'm fine with filing the item.
It's been a good preview.
Motion to file, yeah, I don't know.
We'll do that without objection?
No.
Clerk?
Complete the agenda.
We're adjourned.
Before 8 o'clock.
Before 8 o'clock.